Call the town council meeting to order of November 19th, 2012, with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to let everybody know who's here tonight, we're going to run through our agenda here. And after we're done, the town clerk will swear in a number of officials and us and those who have been elected. And after that, the new council will take their seats and run through their agenda. And when both are done, we will have refreshments and hope that you'll stay and we can visit and have some cider and some little goodies. So we're going to do it that way. And either meeting is not long. First item up, ordinance amendment decisions. The first one was on a proposed amendment to the animal control commission.
Can I make a motion to adopt the Chapter 4 Animals Article 1, Section 4 to 1, definitions to be amended as follows. Animal Control Commission means an appointed committee consisting of five qualified electors of the town, which shall advise the town council and the town manager without about any manners pertaining to the operation of the municipal animal control shelter and perform such other duties as may be assigned from time to time by the town council.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Lisa, you have a copy of that?
Yeah.
All right, next up, render a decision on the proposed ordinance amendment in reference to the conservation commission. You have a motion to make?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance amendment of Hopkinton Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2 Administration, Article 2 Division 3, Conservation Commission. Proposed Amendment, Section 2-67, Composition, Appointment, Terms and Organization. The Conservation Commission shall consist of five members appointed by the town council and a quorum of any meeting shall consist of at least three members. The members of such commission shall be appointed for three-year terms except the initial appointments of the members shall be as follows: two members for one year, two members for two years, and one member for three years.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
See how fast we can do these things. Consent agenda, was there anything to be removed?
Yeah, can you pull November's sheet, please?
Okay. Anything else, anyone?
You've got to just remember that these others were 2011 at the end of the thing instead of 2012.
Yep. Motion to approve town council meeting minutes of September 17th, 2012, town council meeting minutes of October 15th, 2012, executive session meeting minutes of June 20th, August 1st, September 6th, September 19th, October 3rd, September 17th, and October 15th, 2011.
Does that include the two that we just got tonight?
Yes. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Frank?
Yes. On the minutes of November 5th, the bottom of page 7 and the bottom of page 8. My name's misspelled on the bottom of page 7.
That's all right.
And the bottom of page 8, I just wanted to add one quick thing regarding my comment to the Depot Square project. After almost the last sentence, "As water was recycled as it pertained to the fountain."
Yes.
That's it for me.
Can I point something out? That was pointed out to me earlier on that same page. It states council president, which should state council vice president at the top of.
Oh, yeah, I picked that up.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it. You read the minutes.
The House Council report to note.
Oh, that was just a typo.
Fifth page down. National grid is not the appropriate national grid. They're a genius.
Okay.
Motion to approve meeting minutes of November 5th, 2012.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With the corrections. Let's see, next up, council president's report. All I wanted to finish up was, we had at the last meeting talked about accomplishments that were made through, you know, cooperation between all. There were a few departments that I didn't mention or might have referred to slightly, but there are some other departments that it isn't a specific accomplishment that we could point to, but more of an overall accomplishment of the way they run their offices is more to the point. Specifically, I wanted to commend our two judges, Linda Urso for probate and Maggie Steele for the municipal court. And our municipal court has been running like clockwork, you know, and they're all doing a very good job all the way around. The, I also wanted to talk about two other offices, and that's the assessor's office and the tax collector's office. Specifically, the comments that I, the feedback that I hear from the community is, sometimes somebody will say, "Oh, another year's gone by. Judy's not leaving," is she? And that's Judy Rye, who works in the assessor's office, who's up to maybe 30 years now?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think it's a little more, I think.
Yeah, she's just, she's very understanding and helpful when people come. Obviously, she knows her job and knows the office, but she also knows the people and the relatives. And she's just been a real asset to the town. And that brings me to Rita Dean, our tax collector, who's also been a long-term employee since, I think, 1996. She's been here around that time. And she has to deal with, she has to deal with the difficult times that people are having with their economics. And she works with them and she sets up a payment plan. So it's not their specific accomplishments, but it's her, it's the way that she does her job that is so helpful to the residents in town. And she really does her best to work with them. But when she needs to be tough, she can do that, too. So we appreciate that. And other than that, I wanted to also thank the Public Works Department. And they did another outstanding job and did their very best when Hurricane Sandy came our way. And they just automatically went into a mode of doing the best they could. I don't know, they've really, they've really come a long way. And also to back them up was our police department, who was there as needed and assisted all that they could. And also, all of it is made possible through our town manager, who's getting them to do their thing, you know? But he is an asset to us all. So I think that's, I think I covered everybody, no? Thank you. The last thing left to do is you'll notice it says Town Departments and Council. There was just one little thing that I wanted to do. And Cynthia, I think you need to get ready.
Yes, I can.
Okay. Tom, you need to stand. Oh, boy.
I wasn't even going to go.
And it's wrapped so nice, too. We'd like you to have this. And then it is, it says Tom Buck, and it's got, it's got his term of office, 2006 to 2012. And it thought it would be nice to you to have this key to the town. I don't think it'll go to, it'd have to be a pretty big door.
Well, Lisa just took my key to the front door back, so.
Isn't that nice?
Well, I can go to the sugar house.
There, there we go. That's what we're going to hang it, right to the sugar house.
But you can see it.
It's been an honor for me to serve the town of Hopkin for the last six years. I'm very humbled by this. This is pretty good. It's been a pleasure to serve the residents of the town of Hopkin. I've tried to put all personal things aside and do exactly what I felt was best for the town of Hopkin for the last six years. I think we pretty much accomplished that goal. I want to commend the new councils who are, were elected this year. Best of luck and keep up the continued path that we've been on for the last six years. This council and the last two councils prior, everybody's got together. We've not always agreed, but we've always been civil and respected everybody else's opinion. And I hope that continues here in Hopkin. Thank you.
Needs another coat of polyurethane.
That's, we'll take care of that.
All right, last up is public forum. Is there anyone wishing to speak at the last public forum? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to move.
You want to move? No, no, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion we adjourn in memory of Shirley Perry.
Second that.
Who is Shirley Perry?
It's got to be her, honestly. Shirley Perry, in fact, she used to work with my mother with her young children at the Clocks Falls Gris Mill. She married to Russ Perry, who was a local businessman in Ashway. For many years, he was a roulette carrier in Ashway. And I believe he was on a police commission years ago. And he was a college candidate at one time. So it's a family that grew up in Ashway, their children did. Russ and sister was the town clerk over no sign Patricia McGowan. And Shirley, they grew up in the Clocks Falls area. And my mother grew up in the Clocks Falls area. So just want to honor her.
Good, thank you, Scott. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm done.
Were you going to stay right here for a few more minutes?
Yes, I'm going to sit here until.
Lisa?
You, George, and Abbott solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful and distinct for the laws of Constitution and the Constitution of the United States and that you will well and truly execute the office of school committee member for the Charles School District for the ensuing four years or until another be engaged in your room or you are legally discharged therefrom. Thank you.
Back in the saddle again, huh, George?
That's good.
Is Elaine Morgan here?
No, she's away.
So if I could have.
Can I have that? Can I have that plate?
Frank?
See, I always told you guys I was going to be sending these chants yelling at you guys up there.
And I'll put you on mom.
So, you ready for us? Okay.
Sure, if you'd all stand, two right hands. You, Scott Billmerz, Sylvia Kate Thompson, Barbara A. Kapavol, Frank Teeland, Doffey, and David F. Husband, solemnly swear that you will be true and faithful into the state and support the laws and constitution thereof and the Constitution of the United States and that you will well and truly execute the office of town council for the ensuing two years until another be engaged in your room or you are legally discharged therefrom. I do. Thank you.
Oh, this is Tom. Tom, your packet, you wouldn't want to forget that.
Well, I gave it as a date.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's the next council's package.
Oh, okay.
I was going to give back.
Okay.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you very much. She's always thinking of everything.
All right. I'd like to call the town council meeting of November 19th to order to the new city council. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for the election of council president.
I nominate, oh, I nom, is it, do you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, I nominate Franklin Doffey as president.
Are there any other nominations for council president? Hearing none, but we have a vote on the nomination of Franklin Doffey as council president. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll follow the same format for council vice president. We'll call for nominations for the election of council vice president.
I nominate Sylvia Thompson for the council vice president.
Are there any other nominations for council vice president? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote on the nomination of Sylvia Thompson as council vice president. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm Steve.
Congratulations. You may proceed with your agenda.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the Hopkin Town Council meeting of November 19th. Consent agenda. I guess we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the petition of National Grid and Verizon to install four new joint poles and anchors on Stubbs Town Road, set December 3rd, 2012, as a hearing date for transfer of a Class B liquor license, RE Pavilion Properties LLC to Frontier Road Properties LLC, accept the following report. Town clerk, approve abatement submitted by the tax assessor.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is the appointments of the town solicitor, Ben Sting and Jestings.
I move that we appoint Ben Sting and Jestings as our town solicitor for the next two years.
Second.
Any discussion, please?
Yes. I would prefer that we have an executive session meeting and review the solicitor's work for these past two years before reinstating Bankston and Jestings' contract. $145,000 is a very large part of our hiring budget and the part we are responsible for as a council. We have not changed nor felt we needed to change solicitors for the past six years, but it would be beneficial to sit down and have a normal discussion and review of the work engendered, as we do for everyone else. We do this with our town manager at every contract cycle, and I believe it is good policy for us to do this with the solicitor as well. Between the town manager and the solicitor, we spend over 5% of our municipal budget. That's over $250,000 a year, a quarter of a million. I am not asking that we re-interview or find new solicitors, but believe strongly that this review is one of our most important jobs before we agree to a new contract.
Counsel.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
First of all, two years ago, I believed that we should put out to bids for legal work, and I would do my objection. Philosophically and instinctively, I believe that we should put, give opportunities for other people to apply, and we do that for boards and commissions. Even though people have been on boards for a number of years, we still re-interview them. But I am supporting the reappointment of this legal firm. I speak as a councilman who has been told by multiple people in this town they prefer our current legal team. And I have responsibility to at least try to listen to my constituents, not that they will always be pleased with my decisions. And also the fact that this legal firm has guided this town council with some legal issues that we've had that have been, let's say, on a table for some time before I returned to the council in 2010. And reminding you, I served on the council from 1996 to 2004. So instinctively, I would be inclined to let other legal firms put their name forward, but I feel confident that's the course of action that I should take as a councilman. Number one, because of sentiment in the community to do so, and also for the history of the legal issues that the town of Hopkin has had and across the local, inter-local, rile into local risk it's helped us with, as well as this law firm. So I, I'm going to support the retention of this law firm. Thank you.
Any other discussion, councilors?
Yeah, I think it's a time to make the comments. I don't believe I had in the last couple of terms I've been on. But in reference to this firm, I want to be perfectly clear. As the counselor, Hurst, pointed out, there is community-wide support for this firm. And I think it's because they've seen the results to some longstanding problems. They've also picked up the phone and called with concerns or problems or pointed things out to the manager, to the council. And it ends up, and very often, with the legal firm. What I, the reason I want to keep them, and I think it's really important, is that they, quite frankly, have saved us money. Sure, we have to pay them an amount to do their job, but I know I'm not supposed to say this, but I know firsthand that we pay them a certain amount in a year, and they've gone over. In other words, they didn't say, "Oh, by the way, you've hit your allotted hours, and I'm sorry, but for the next month, you're on your own." Nor did they charge us anymore. So they've gone over, and I, they don't, you know, maybe there's people at the firm would like me to say that, but it's true. The planning board and zoning board are very happy with the attorneys that they have representing their boards. And they, not only have they resolved some of the longstanding issues, but there are so many things that they do on a daily basis that kind of curtails or keeps something. They'll solve something, and it may not happen right away. Sometimes it takes a couple of weeks. Sometimes it takes a little longer. But the point is that they're able to negotiate and resolve some disputes, so they don't end up in court. And that happens more times than people know. There are other things that they know because they've been with us for some years. They know quite, they know our weaknesses. They know what departments may be short-staffed, what's going on. Maybe they're temporarily short-staffed, and they've stepped up and helped out in ways that you probably wouldn't think a law firm would. But we, but they do. And we have the benefit of the entire firm. Whenever something comes up in any area, she knows what colleagues she can call if it's something she might need. When I say she, I mean Pat Buckley might need advice on. And it goes, it goes for the solicitors that cover the planning board and the zoning board also. So they know what strengths and weaknesses we have townwide and, you know, with our departments. But the other important part that I think is really good is that it's an outside firm. It isn't a local firm. It's not from this town. It's not from a neighboring town. They have not had a conflict. They have not individually benefited. They're not lawyers that are working for us that are then deciding to, for instance, buy property down here. They're not, they're not, they're, they have integrity, and they're honest, and they're not misusing any information that they may come by. And sometimes when you have locals, sometimes you might get a little too comfortable. And while I feel comfortable in calling them and asking them for information, I know that what they tell me, maybe sometimes I don't like to hear what they have to say. Maybe sometimes it might take a little while to get an answer. But I know that when I get that answer and they do respond, I have every confidence that it's honest and it's the very best advice that we could get. And we're not, we're not giving them raises. We're not paying out or adding to that. And at some point, we may decide in the future that maybe they do need a little more. But I guess the bottom line is, they have made the difference here in town. And a lot of the, when people think things are, you know, running nice and smooth and the town's going in the right direction and things are working out well, it's because we have a firm that we can have access to. And they do pick up, she actually, when you call, she actually answers the phone. She'll, you know, so it's all of those things. And I think that sometimes when an election, or for instance, this election, and it's happened in the past, when we get around the election time, the first thing that the people say when they call me, "Are you going to keep the same firm? You're not going to let them go, are you?" And they get nervous, and I can understand why. Because if you're not careful, you end up with more trouble. So, you know, the old adage, and I've heard it, and it's been said to me, "If it ain't broke, don't fix it." But there's, it's more to it than that. There's a lot more to it. So I guess that's all I have to say about our solicitors.
Tom, me and your Bill McGary, would you like to say a few words on this subject?
Oh, yes, thank you very much. Although this is a council appointment, I really feel compelled to speak on this matter. And as the town manager, I run the day-to-day affairs of the town. And I deal with Pat Buckley on a daily basis, not only Monday through Friday with email messages and multiple telephone calls, but also on weekends, I speak to her all the time. She gives excellent legal advice. And sometimes even more importantly, she just gives good old-fashioned, common-sense, practical advice that's very helpful to me. I've been in public sector government for over 40 years, and I've worked with criminal attorneys and civil attorneys, prosecuting attorneys, defense attorneys, labor attorneys. And I can honestly tell you, after all that public service, Pat Buckley is as good, if not better, than any of those attorneys. I'm very proud to be able to work with her. She's intelligent. She has the institutional knowledge that we need here in Hopkin. Being here for six years and also serving a term in the past. She's very responsive, like Sylvia mentioned earlier. When you call her, she answers the phone. You don't have to wait for three days for an answer, and you don't have to wait another three days for her to check with three other attorneys. She's, the town of Hopkin is very fortunate to have Pat Buckley as its town solicitor. And the two assistant solicitors, Todd Romano for the zoning board and Scott LeVague for the planning board are absolutely outstanding. So I think the town is moving in the right direction to reappoint Bankston and Jestings for another two years for the town. And I certainly would look forward to working with that firm for another two years. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. McGary. Councilman, husband, would you like to weigh in on anything? Okay.
Something else?
Sure.
I would say, well, this was just a lovely review, exactly what was requested. Thank you all very much.
For me, regarding the solicitor's office, when I first started out in town government, you know, I was very green. I didn't know much about a lot of the ins and outs. And I was very fortunate to have Pat there to reach out to. Even on the weekends, if I put in my email, you know, "Please call me, it's important," she would call me. And that, to me, is just being responsive, I guess, is really just important and also getting the good legal advice that we need to get here. And as Councilwoman Thompson has said, that they've actually saved us money by just being there and being responsive and giving us good legal advice. So I'm for appointing them again. I guess, want to go for a vote? So, I guess, want to go for a vote? Scott?
I don't have any brothers to say.
You want to... What, are you looking for a poll vote?
Yeah, that's poll vote.
Oh, okay. He's looking for a poll vote, one by one.
Usually, we just do a regular vote, usually, but I say yes.
Yes.
Yes, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the appointment agenda is the appointment of the probate judge, Maggie Steele.
No, it's not.
Oh, so, that's all right.
I'm sorry.
It's Linda Erso, is it?
Yes. I move that we appoint Linda Erso as our probate judge.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, council president appointments. First on the council president appointment item is the appointment of council personnel liaison. That, I guess, is typically the council president regarding some personnel matters, and I'll take that item under my belt. And then the next... Next is the group of appointments to the council representatives to boards, commissions, and committees. We've got a bunch. The Affordable Housing Partnership, Animal Control Commission, Conservation Commission, Economic Development Commission, Historic District Commission, Juvenile Hearing Board, Land Trust, Planning Board, Police Commission, Recreation Commission, Waste Water Management District Commission, Zoning Board Review, and Committee on Aging. I guess I'd like us all to kind of maybe pick this, I think this is twelve, thirteen? Thirteen of them?
You want to start at the top and just work our way down?
Yeah, let's go down, starting with the Affordable Housing Partnership. Anybody want to take ownership of that and be the liaison?
I'll do that again, if that sounds okay.
We should know that the nights these meet on, so that we don't have a conflict.
I had no clue. I had no clue.
Well, I don't need to know, so if Scott needs to know, we'll look it up.
Sylvia, what about the Animal Control Commission?
I would like to do... I think that's a new one for me.
Okay. You see? Conservation Commission.
Frank, I could do that if you wanted me to.
Okay. Great, thanks, Dave.
You'd be good.
Economic Development Commission.
Do you think it's necessary that's been dormant for some time?
It has, it has.
Well, I would, if it becomes non-dormant, I'm certainly interested in economic development and the tax base, so if it perks back up. So I'll leave it as a question mark, you know, until we see what happens, but...
What about the Historic District Commission?
Frank, I live in one historic district, so I could...
Yeah, they're just getting started as a commission, too.
All right, David, thank you. Juvenile Hearing Board.
I was the liaison for that at one point, but you really don't liaison with that, because you're not allowed in the room, which is fine. So I found that it was... Usually, if juvenile hearing board needs anything, they go straight to the police chief anyway. So I would say whoever's on the police commission could perhaps double...
That makes sense.
...do with the juvenile hearing board.
That's where you want to sign that, okay. Let's leave that open. Land Trust.
I'd do that. When do they meet?
They're on Monday.
And it's a meeting, it's not a meeting, it's not a council meeting night, it's a different night.
They've begun meeting twice per month.
This is Land Trust, okay.
You know, and of course, you don't have to go to every meeting, but you go if you feel up to it, or if you think they need you.
Okay. Great. Planning Board, are you active?
I would like to do that, I've really enjoyed working with them.
You currently serve?
I do, and I really think they're just doing a great job, they're redoing all the regs and subregs, and I think it's just wonderful, they're moving along beautifully.
Police Commission.
I'll do that one.
Okay.
And the juvenile hearing board will get lumped into it, and just as Barbara said, you can't go to the meetings anyway.
Right.
Right.
Rec Commission, Recreation Commission.
Yeah, I'm interested in that one, too.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I was interested in it as well, but I'll happily just go when I need to.
Okay.
Okay.
Sylvia could do that.
Okay. Waste Water Management District Commission.
Really should be you, Sylvia, you know more about it than anyone sitting here.
Was it active, Sylvia?
Yeah, it's a complicated... It's got to get resolved, it's one of those things that it needs town manager help, if we're ever going to be able to do anything with it, because we just don't have the staff. So you can put me down as a person who hopefully may find a solution.
Right.
When does the zoning board, you meet?
Right.
Next is the Zoning Board Review.
I'll take that, I mean, I'm on the Republican Town Committee, but that's on the fourth Thursday, so I shouldn't have a conflict.
Okay, you want that, Scott? And last, Committee on Aging, Barbara.
Yeah, definitely. I've been working with them through, with Randall, yes, yeah.
Bingo skills.
My bingo skills are phenomenal, I'm quite the caller. I am the caller, I'm telling you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Council President Report. I just... Oh, I'm sorry.
The town clerks.
Oh, I'm sorry. Grant the town clerk's approbation of Lorraine Aruda as deputy town clerk to November 2014.
So moved, second. He moved it, I second it. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the Council President Report, that's me. I just wanted to kind of say a few words as incoming president. First, I wanted to thank the residents of Hopkin for electing me to serve for the next two years. Secondly, I wanted to thank the members of the town council for their vote and confidence in me to serve as their president. I look forward to working with each one of the council members to accomplish the necessary tasks that will face us in the next two years. I also look forward to working with town manager Bill McGary and the solicitor's office and Pat Buckley, and Lisa Cook-Martin in the clerk's office more closely. I want the residents, council, and town employees to know that I'll execute the position of town council president with distinction, integrity, and an open mind. I especially want the council to know that I'll always be there for them. Going forward, I hope the business before us in the next two years will be conductive with a sense of purpose, and always keep the taxpayers' hard-earned money at the forefront of every financial decision we make. With that, I respectfully ask the council... I respectfully ask each council member, including myself, to think of three priority items to accomplish in the next council term. I want to frame this up by just saying, you know, no pie in the sky items like, you know, succeed from the Charroles School Committee, as much as we'd like to sometimes, but, you know, just some rather three items that we can realistically accomplish in the next two years. And if you can, when you're thinking about these three items, pay close attention to the cost and who else might be involved in your action item. Email me the priorities by the end of the year, and I'll put together a common ideas and action steps to set up a workshop or two to discuss and finalize the items. Once finalized, these steps will be coordinated with the town manager for hopeful implementation going forward. Thank you. So I guess everybody will have my email, so...
And I've got a question. Perhaps Lisa could review the process for agenda items and when you want, the deadlines for everything, so we're all on the same page.
So there's been no change in regards to any of what's happened in the past. The deadline to submit council agenda items is new time on Tuesday prior to the meeting. The council president sets the agenda. I believe that in the last few years, there's been, if there are requests for a particular item, that they get forward to the council president, so that he or she could review them or pay them. Look at your packets, per usual, on your book week, you get the big book, and then all week, you receive a regional packet. Unless it's marked confidential, we open your mail and stamp it in with a receipt record stamp.
Now, submission of... Let's suppose somebody wants to submit a letter or report to the packet, what's the deadline for just getting it in the packet?
That's pretty flexible in-house. We try to, if they let me know by the Tuesday, I'll know, put it on there, and then we can people, uh, today or so. I mean...
No, so, but if somebody has just some, it's not an agenda item, it's just information for the council, and they just want it in the packet?
Yeah, that can come in.
Right up till...
Right up until Friday.
Really, are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's helpful. All right. Yeah, one sec. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Town Manager Report.
I thought you were going to ask, just say thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara. Yeah, I wanted to go around, I guess, does anybody else have any comments, I guess?
I have a question. Do, I asked Lisa, are all the town council members' phone numbers and email addresses posted in public?
They are on the website. We'll ask for them, we have them available.
Okay, good, good. I'll work it off.
Yeah. We just have to, I guess, maybe get in touch with Bill to replace Tom, perhaps, with David's info.
Sure.
All right?
Wow, very efficient.
That's right. Already done.
Just go around in a circle.
All right, the council person, Scapaldo?
No, just go in a circle. I don't think David knows. Do you want to say anything to the public, like, "Thank you for voting for me," or anything like that?
No, that's fine.
Just giving this opportunity to do this?
I'm not much on Poplin circumstance, thank you very much, so if there was a voter for me.
Thank you. I really want to thank the town citizens who voted for me, too, and I'll promise to represent all of you, the entire town citizenry, as judiciously as I can. But we need your input, your opinions, we need them, not just as against something, but we need you when you're for something. It does not help us to have a fifty-fifty vote. We need to know what you want, not just what we may want. Sixty-four percent of you voted this round, thanks a lot, that's just fabulous. Please vote again at each of our budget cycles as well. We need to know what you think of the school budget and the municipal budget. You are the town, we are not, we are just elected officials. The Charter Review Commission will need members. Our zoning map and our zoning use table with strong aquifer protection will be addressed this coming year. A new harvest festival celebrating rural Hopkin when brought in October. Be part of us, because you are us, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Sylvia, first, I'm making a call. Okay, Scott?
No, just if you have anything to say, scottbillhurst@hopkin.com, 401-377-4643. Thank you.
Okay, great. Next on the agenda, Town Manager Report. Bill McGary, please.
Thank you. Just very briefly, a couple of meetings. November 7th, I attended the monthly meeting of the town's planning board regarding the violation of the board's prior approval of the Shady Grove subdivision as it relates to the construction and maintenance of a fire system for that particular subdivision. On November 15th, convened a regularly scheduled bi-monthly department head meeting that was held in the police station conference room. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill? Okay, public forum, anybody out there wishing to speak? Okay, have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We can stay, let's have something to eat.